Okay.
You can bring it over to the side of you because you're always straddling.
Yeah, I always kind of forget about that. You're making me a little nervous. I was like, I don't have this. You just get away. I wish. That would be a nice move. We could add the bylaws. What was it? Because one canceled and then one is under scheduled. I feel like every time people do the admin theory and admin theory, I feel like people always cancel when they come to interview. I remember we had a panel and she went through like a week or more. I think that was weird. But she, I mean, I think it's kind of like, I think. See, I left my voicemail. I left my voicemail.
All right, Caitlin, I think we're ready. If you want to do your script. Your mic.
If you are a board member, please be sure to unmute your microphone when speaking for the broadcast and recording. The community development manager is the host of the meeting. For tonight's planning commission meeting, please dial seven two zero three eight six nine zero two three and use code one zero four zero nine one star for live Spanish translation services.
Is there a translation read to Caitlin or? I will now call the meeting to order. Please stand for our pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, and the visible liberty and justice of all. Thank you all. Caitlin, can please take a roll call of the commissioners?
Chairman Popiel.
Present.
Vice Chair Amador.
Present.
Commissioner Douglas.
Present.
Commissioner Ingram.
Present.
Commissioner Bill Toft.
Present.
Thank you for all the commissioners present with us here tonight. Would also like to introduce staff present with here tonight. Sarah Geiger, Deputy City Attorney. Jim Tolbert, Director of Community Development. Steve Timms, Planning Manager. Tricia Mason, Community Development Manager. Jennifer Jones, Principal Planner. Harry Brennan, Planner. Nathan Chavez, Planner. Caitlin Memmer, Planning Commissioner Liaison. Thank you all for our presence with us tonight as well. Can I have a motion for the approval of our last meeting?
So move. Second.
Have a motion. I have a second to approve our minutes from our last meeting. Please call for a vote.
If you could please vote electronically.
Commissioner Beltoff, I think you'd have to abstain since you're not here last time.
Commissioner Amador, yours one showed up as absent. I can restart it. Now it says not voted.
Yeah, the voting screen went away.
Okay, let me, um, let me reset it. Okay, please try now.
The motion for approval of the minutes has passed for yeses, zero nos, and one abstain. We'll now move on to the next part of the agenda for, um, to adopt the appeal rules and procedures adopted by City Council on May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two for appeals of the director's decision to the planning commission. Is there a motion from the commissioners to adopt the procedure?
There's a motion to adopt.
Say that again.
There, there's a motion to adopt the procedures.
Yeah. Can you please make the motion?
I make the motion to adopt the procedures.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll now call for a vote.
You should be able to vote electronically.
The motion has passed five yeses to adopt our appeal rules of procedure. We will now move to the appeal case. Will staff please introduce the case?
Yes, good evening. We have case number AP dash sixteen dash twenty-two, and that is Oakwood Homes appealing the city's decision to deny its application for a lot line and terminology adjustment for track C of Reunion Ridge filing one, PA dash one, located at the southwest corner of East one hundred and fourth Avenue and Tucson Street, Zone PUD. I believe the director will be presenting from the city.
I'd like to state for the record, um, it's June seventh, two thousand twenty-two at six fourteen PM. Um, the subject matter of the hearing shall be limited to the issues framed by the applicant in the written appeal. Please note that the applicant and the city will have ten minutes each to present their side. Commissioner will allow the city to present its case to the commission. We will also allow the applicant to present their case to the commission. And we will have, allow the commissioners to obviously ask questions as well.
Ready?
Ready.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you so much for being here. As was stated, we're here to discuss an appeal of my decision regarding a terminology adjustment plat that's found under the lot line and terminology adjustment section, twenty-one dash thirty-two forty-four, the land development code. The applicant is asking for approval of this adjustment under that code. So background, uh, Oakwood submitted an application for this, uh, that had been, uh, property previously planted as part of, uh, Reunion Ridge filing one. That application was denied. The denial was communicated in a letter of April nineteenth, uh, to the applicants, informing them of the denial and explaining that the land use application submitted could not be processed as a terminology change. It was recommended that they submit for a final plat and include both the change from a tract to a lot and revision of lot lines. There was also a revision of lot lines, uh, submitted with this. Uh, Oakwood has decided to appeal the director's decision. Uh, this appeal is now before you for review and recommendation to City Council de novo. So just a little more background about how this decision was rendered. The, uh, lot line and terminology adjustments, uh, the following, uh, description is, uh, of this is in the code in thirty, twenty-one thirty-two forty-four, uh, which states that the lot lines or terminology of previously recorded documents may only be adjusted in accordance with this section. Further, the review of the director and the DRT is deemed appropriate by the director will review applications for lot line or terminology adjustments. The director is authorized to approve, approve the conditions or deny such application based on the criteria. And then the, uh, A through E of the actual criteria that this falls under. As much as I hate to read slides, let me just go over these. The adjustment does not increase the number of lots or parcels or create new lots or parcels. The adjustment does not affect a recorded easement without the prior approval of the easement holder. Street locations will not be changed. The adjustment will not create any non-conformities or increase the degree of non-conformity of any existing structure or use, and the adjustment complies with all other city standards. The definitions that are applicable here. So a lot shall mean a unit of subdivided land occupied or designed to be occupied by a primary use or building. That's important here. Occupied or designed to be occupied by a primary use or building, or group of such buildings and accessories. A lot line adjustment shall mean a change in lot or parcel boundaries that does not create additional lots or parcels. A plat shall mean a map that defines a subdivision of land. Company shows lots, blocks, streets, and other features relevant to the development. And a tract, which is, this is the other key definition, shall mean a unit of subdivided land not occupied or designed to be occupied by a primary building such as open space or drainage. Again, the lot and tract are the important terms. A tract is not occupied or designed to be occupied. A lot is designed to be occupied by a primary use or building. A lot is needed for development. Tracks can be utilized for open space landscaping and drainage, and without any structures that would require a certificate of occupancy. When a tract becomes a lot, there's a land use entitlement bestowed upon it because it is then developable. And the applicant here seeks to change track C in the reunion ridge filing one from a tract to a lot for the purpose of development. There were originally zero lots and one tract. What they're requesting is one lot and zero tracks. Again, you know, so we refer them to a final plat. A final plat is a process in which lots are created and recorded. The final plat is the only mechanism in our code in which to legally create a newer additional lot within that code. The approval criteria for a final plat may be approved, and you're very familiar with the nine criteria. I won't read through all those. But just, uh, you know, the subdivision is consistent with any approved rezoning. The final plat is the process to create, uh, a lot. Again, the reason we have that is the approval criteria allow the city to address the suitability for development. Without the final plat, we don't get a chance to address the suitability. It allows us, uh, the criteria allow us to look at zoning legality per other laws, the maximization of open space, whether lot patterns are in compliance with city standards, any adverse impacts, the need or, uh, provision of public facilities, any phasing, and most importantly, whether development agreement is in, is necessary to achieve the improvements that we want. Increasing the number of lots through a lot line and terminology adjustment deprives the city of the opportunity to review and assess these criteria. So, uh, if you look at the approval criteria for a lot line and terminology adjustment, it leads to the conclusion that, uh, if reviewed under it, that it does not meet criteria three A because the change creates a new lot. Therefore, in my opinion, the application for a lot line and terminology adjustment must be denied. And we'll be done with that. Thank you very much. Yeah, and the procedure allows for questions after both of us, so.
Correct.
So before I get started, I just wanted you to know that, um, copies of the presentation were put on your chair in advance, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Michelle Berger. I'm with the law firm of Spencer Fane, and we're located at seventeen hundred Lincoln Street, Suite two thousand, Denver, Colorado, eight oh two oh three. Tonight, I'm representing Oakwood Homes regarding its appeal of the city's decision denying Oakwood's application for a lot line and terminology adjustment to retitle a parcel known as Track C in PA one as a lot under LDC section twenty-one dash thirty-two forty-four. A few things to keep in mind tonight. Terminology adjustments are allowed under LDC twenty-one thirty-two forty-four for previously approved plats. Track C was plotted as part of the reunion ridge filing number one plat and was designated for future development in that plat. The city's own FAQs specifically state this is the process to be used to retitle a tract as a lot. And finally, the city stated that the lot line adjustment could be approved, but not the terminology change. So that's what we're appealing here. The city's staff report doesn't address the legal arguments cited by Oakwood in our, uh, letter to the planning commission. Specifically, the city cannot amend the LDC through the guise of a new interpretation. Colorado law is clear that a local government's code amendment under the guise of an interpretation should be afforded no legal weight. This is especially true when, as here, a new interpretation is issued without notice and an opportunity to be heard. The city admitted it is interpreting the code in a new way with no notice to Oakwood. Even if the city would be allowed to, uh, pursue this new interpretation of the LDC, a court would reject the city's new interpretation because it's inconsistent with extrinsic authorities such as the city's own FAQs. It would lead to an inconsistent and absurd result as discussed in our letter to the commission, and it's inconsistent with how the city advised Oakwood to proceed in an August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one email, and then in the city's November twenty-first, twenty twenty-one application review comments. By requiring Oakwood to comply with the subdivision standards, the city also exceeded its jurisdiction. Oakwood has a vested right to develop this parcel in accordance with the reunion ridge filing number one plat and the reunion PUD. Requiring Oakwood to submit a subdivision plat and comply with the subdivision standards exceeded the city's authority to regulate land uses. And finally, the city violated Colorado revised statute section twenty-nine dash twenty dash two oh three sub two by replacing a discretionary condition on Oakwood's application. Specifically, it was a condition that wasn't based on duly adopted standards that are sufficiently specific to ensure that the condition is imposed in a rational and consistent manner. If the city's denial is upheld, Oakwood could be entitled to remove the condition and damages as allowed under the statute by a court. Instead, the city argues that the only way to retitle Track C is through, oh, a final, a final plat process. I'm going to proceed without the, uh, presentation. The city also argues the plotting process is necessary to allow the city an opportunity to review and assess PA one in light of the final plat criteria. However, the city's position is unsupportable. The city is misapplying the code criteria for a lot line adjustment to a terminology adjustment under which there's no need to further subdivide the property or create a new lot. Also, the city already had an opportunity to address each of the final plat approval criteria for PA one during its approval of the reunion ridge filing one plat. Finally, the city has an opportunity to assess any ancillary criteria through the PUD development permit process. On the screen is a chart showing the final plat approval criteria in the left-hand column. The right-hand column shows the previously approved land use applications under which the city already had the opportunity to review these criteria, namely the reunion ridge filing number one plat and the reunion PUD zone document. This chart not only refutes the city's argument, but is exactly why a terminology change can only be used for a parcel that is part of a previously approved plat. This chart also supports why the approval criteria the city is leaning on, that the application must not, quote, "increase the number of lots or parcels", applies to lot line adjustments, but not to terminology adjustments as shown in the criteria that Mr. Tolbert shared with you. By definition, when a tract is retitled as a lot, the total number of lots will always be increased, but not in the way a lot line adjustment would create new lots or new parcels. Thus, there is no subdivision. Oakwood's application is not a subdivision of property and does not rise to the level of requiring a reexamination of the final plat approval criteria. To hold otherwise would render an absurd result in an interpretation of the code. In this next chart, the final plat approval criteria are again shown on the left, and in the right-hand column, you see the PUD development permit application process as it applies to and corresponds to these criteria. This process is yet another opportunity for the city to ensure the final plat approval criteria are met. Finally, the city argues that retitling Track C as a lot must be accomplished through the final plat approval process in order to provide the city an opportunity to seek the lawful exactions to offset the adverse impacts of the development. As you can see in the chart above, of the six allowed exactions under the LDC, only two are assessed at the final plat stage, pub, school fees and public park fees. The oil and gas impact fee is not applicable to this application. Both of these fees were previously satisfied for Track C as part of the reunion ridge filing number one plat approval and the reunion PUD zone document. Specifically, schools were, um, examined as part of the reunion PUD zone document when it was initially adopted and approved. During that process, calculations for land to be dedicated for schools were based on the maximum number of residential units allowed in Village Nine, which includes the reunion ridge area and the homes planned for PA one. In twenty nineteen, when the reunion PUD zone document amendment was approved by the city, the school acreages were reexamined and remained the same. All of these lands either have been or will be dedicated by Oakwood. For parks, the same type of calculations and analysis occurred, and these lands either have been or will be dedicated by Oakwood. The remaining exactions are for public improvements to be owned and maintained by the city, specifically roadway and drainage facilities. roadway and drainage facilities. These fees are typically calculated at the PUD development permit stage and collected at the time of building permitting. In this case, Oakwood has already constructed the necessary city-owned and maintained roadway and drainage facilities as part of the reunion ridge filing number one plat and as required by the reunion consolidated development agreement. In summation, the LDC terminology adjustment, not final plat process, applies to Oakwood's application. Oakwood's application meets all the criteria for a terminology change, and the city's denial is a misinterpretation of the LDC, which would lead to an absurd result. Finally, the city exceeded its authority in requiring a final plat to retitle Track C. Therefore, Oakwood Homes respectfully request the planning commission make a recommendation upholding Oakwood's appeal, thereby reversing the city's decision and approving the use of a terminology adjustment to retitle Track C to a lot. Thank you so much for your time tonight, and thank you to the staff for their time. Jimmy Hayes and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the commissioners. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I have a question for the applicant, for Oakwood. Thank you for your testimony. What's your purpose of making changes to Track C?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite make out your question.
Sorry. What's your purpose in changing Track C?
So Track C, the reason for the request to retitle it as a lot is to develop it as a one-lot development. It is not planned to be further subdivided into smaller lots.
Okay. Now, you stated back in 2019 or previous when you brought this forward as filing one,
And then if you can go to the land summary table, I'm not sure what page that's on. Oh, I think maybe back?
I think it was Amendment 5. At that time, Track C and Track X were drainage and landscaping or open space?
Nope. Okay, so now if you scroll down, you'll see that Track X, if you go across, is open So Track X was designated for drainage, and Track C was designated for future development space, utilities, drainage, park, owner, reunion metro district. If you go up to Track C, it says future development, owner is Clayton Properties Group Inc., R2 in the land use summary in the reunion ridge filing number one plat. Inc.
So the adjustment, I guess, maybe if you could just reread the adjustment, the adjustment Are we able to bring up the drawing of that?
I don't have it available. I think staff will.
Does the staff have the?
Yeah.
I think that would help.
One second, please.
for Track C would say what? This is what it originally said.
It would be entitled a lot instead of a tract.
So it was plotted, I mean, it was brought before city council as a tract, not a lot, correct?
So under the reunion ridge filing number one plat, it was approved as a tract and designated for future development. It's not uncommon for this to happen in plats when the developer knows what the planned development is, but is uncertain whether there'll be a need for additional subdivision. So in this case, it's not designed for additional subdivision, the planned development. If lot, if Track C would have been ultimately chosen to be developed in a way that required further subdivision, certainly there'd be a plating process. There would be an amendment to this reunion ridge filing one. I think if you go back, can you go back to the overview? So if you kind of zoom in there a little bit, if you look over to Track A and Track that, so that was actually platted, Track AA. I believe that was reunion ridge filing one amendment four. Was that, when did, when was, was it Track A or Track B that was further subdivided?
Yeah, Track A was divided into reunion ridge filing one amendment two, and Track B was subdivided into reunion ridge amendment four. And the reason these were platted as tracks at all is because they were all below 35 acres. And with the annexation, or the dedication of right-of-way for Tucson and Devon, it created parcels that needed to be subdivided.
Now, and then we have Detail BB and Detail CC. It just shows as drainage easement. It doesn't show for future development. It just shows as a tract, so it's. Are you wanting to adjust the lines so it's developable? So you can develop on it? Because right now, Track X, the drainage easement is part of Track C as well, right? That's.
So, so Track X is a standalone tract from Track C, and Track X will remain as a drainage and open space parcel. I believe the lot line adjustment that was submitted for Track X as part of this application was for a minor adjustment of that particular lot line to reflect the actual size. Is that correct?
Yes, the intent of, is to, a two-step process, is to change Track C from a tract to a lot. And then, once approved, we would process a lot line adjustment between X and C, not creating any new lots or any new tracks, but rather finalizing the exact location of the drainage based on the final construction plans that have been approved by the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Question for Mr. Tolbert. Can we go back to the, sorry, the previous, the overview one? So, Mr. Tolbert, if Track A and Track B, right, are lots, why would C, in your opinion, not stay with that consistency of Track A and B?
I mean, it's not uncommon, as they said, for these to be platted as tracks and be held for future development. You know, I wasn't around when this was done, but that's, again, that's not uncommon. I think that's, that's not an unusual thing. The lot line adjustment is just a minor issue. Like I say, if it wasn't for the terminology change, the lot line would have flown through, but.
But hearing what the applicant had to say, Track C would be consistent with what we've done with Track A and Track B.
Right.
Further questions from the commissioners?
First staff, actually. So in changing verbiage or definitions.
Mr. Tolbert, then, yeah.
Mr. Tolbert, I'm thinking about unintended consequences to the already approved plat. Would, in your opinion, would there be any? I guess I'm just trying to figure out, like, this definition piece of tract lot, why? And if everything was already, would there be, I'll just, I'll hold my comment, but would there be a negative impact to something that's already approved by changing definition? That's my question.
Would there be a negative impact? I don't see any. I just, again, my interpretation is based on, I don't see in the code that we're able to use terminology adjustment to do this. As far as if it happened, I don't see a negative impact as far as development occurring.
Any further questions from the commissioners?
Yes, I have one more for legal. Has there been any in the past terminology just like this as far as changing a tract to a lot?
That would be a question for staff, Commissioner Douglas. I'm not familiar with the history of.
Okay.
As I understand it, yes, there were some made in the past using this, a different interpretation.
Okay. Is that in the packet, this part of our?
I think the applicant supplied some information about that.
Okay.
I would comment in terms of the record. We're specifically talking about Oakwood's appeal and their specific request for the terminology adjustment with respect to Track C. So to a large extent, the prior cases would not be part of this particular record.
So the letter, the letter that was sent to Oakwood, is that the standard procedure for them to bring it back, the full plat, and do an amendment?
It is standard procedure when we deny it to send a letter of denial.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions from the commissioners? We will now close the hearing. Comments from the commissioners? I can go first, if you want. I would be in favor of reversing the city's decision. I believe Track A and Track B, the procedure of converting lots, for Track C to convert to a lot, along with what the legend says, is I would be in favor of reversing the decision. I think that natural process from Track A to Track B to Track C makes sense to me. Comments?
And so, in a different life, in an architectural background and understanding definitions of tracks, building, zoning, anything else, traditionally in a process when, we'll just say, a building code changes or land development code changes, that there would be a provision of grandfathering things in to this, what was the original intent. And hearing the conversation about a decision that is made, I'm also in favor of denying or reversing the city's request for the lot change, the terminology change. So that's just where I'm at, I would imagine. I mean, yes, things happen over time. There are things that are market-driven and whatnot, but the way I see this, it would be consistent, the same as the chairman of the board, that it would be consistent throughout the overall plat. Thank you.
Any further comments from the commissioners? Is there a motion for the case? Want me to make a motion? I move that the planning commission approve to reverse the city's decision and approve the use of a terminology adjustment to retitle Track C to a lot.
Sorry, just a point of order. The commission can deny or affirm the city's decision or affirm with conditions, but it can't make another decision, if that makes sense. So you can either affirm or deny with conditions.
So I make a motion to deny the city's decision.
Right, which would be to clarify a motion.
To reverse the city's decision.
Sure, we'll go with that.
To approve the terminology adjustment. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Please call for a vote.
If you could please vote electronically.
The motion has passed. Four yeses, one no's. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, just for clarification, this item's going to city council on June the 20th, I think?
20th, yes.
Okay.
So your motion will be included in that packet to council?
Yeah, the minutes, the minutes for this meeting will be in that packet, correct? Thank you.
Will staff introduce the next presentation? Next case?
Okay, the presentation item on the agenda is Case Z-978-22, and that's Murray Farms' PUD Concept Schematic, and I believe Harry Brennan from staff will be presenting.
Good evening, commissioners. The case before you this evening is the Murray Farms' PUD Concept Schematic. The applicant in this case is Norris Design with Cypress Equity Investments. The Murray Farms area constitutes the entirety of the sort of square between East 112th Avenue, East 108th Avenue, Havana Street, and the River Oaks subdivision to the east. This application includes only a portion of that, 92 and 1/2 acre portion that is highlighted in yellow here. Currently, the comprehensive plan designates three different land uses within this area, industrial, excuse me, industrial slash distribution, commercial and residential medium. And these land uses are also reflected in the existing underlying zoning. The PUD Concept Schematic before you this evening proposes four planning areas that are similar to the existing comp plan and zoning, but diverge in a few key areas that I will talk about later. And the purpose of PUD zoning is to bring about a more cohesive master design for a large area and also to achieve a land use scheme that would not be otherwise possible under the, under straight zoning. And in terms of process, there is no decision or recommendation required from commission this evening, no formal action. Instead, the commission is just asked to provide feedback to the applicant in order to inform a future submittal, which would be in the form of a formal PUD zone document. Staff have provided questions at the end of this presentation, and they're also repeated in your staff report or in your packet within the staff report, just for consideration by the commission. The area again here is south of East 112th, north of 108th, east of Havana Street, and just west of the River Oaks subdivision. As you can see, it's a portion that has been used historically for agricultural purposes related to the Murray Farms, or Murray family farms. There are existing buildings out on the property related to that use, including what the arrow is pointing to here at the southeast corner of the property, which is the historic farmhouse and barn. And I say historic with a lowercase h, they're not formally designated as such. And as I mentioned, the comp plan includes three different land use categories in this area, the commercial, the industrial distribution, and the residential. The commercial, the industrial distribution, and the residential medium. This is the proposed PUD concept. PA1 is the commercial area focused along East 112th and Havana Street, that intersection there. The industrial area sort of flanks, or I guess, yeah, sort of flanks that commercial area. And then the residential area is on the eastern half, along with an open space area designated in between this proposed development and the River Oaks neighborhood. The PUD Concept Schematic also indicates some preliminary locations for pedestrian connections and circulation, vehicular circulation, drainage, including a drainage channel alignment that would daylight, or it would be a, I should say, open air drainage channel that does feed into Henderson Creek. And this PUD, PUD concept also provides some preliminary locations for building footprints. And as I mentioned, the, the commercial activity or the commercial uses would really be focused on that intersection there. The industrial would be to the southeast of that. And the residential core, that, that would include, I should say, single-family attached and detached uses. And that open space edge, as I mentioned, would be on the eastern boundary. In terms of specific land uses, the commercial area is somewhat similar. I should say similar, but slightly more limited than the city's existing C3 zoning designation. The residential would allow for single-family detached, single-family attached uses with a maximum density of up to 12 dwelling units per acre. The flex industrial would be similar to the city's existing I1 category with office, some retail perhaps, warehouses, distribution, that sort of use there. And then, of course, the open space buffer. The applicant did not propose any programming for that open space just yet, but it could include trails and things like that. And specific areas where this proposed zoning scheme would vary from the existing zoning, the maximum density proposed in PA3, which is the residential area, is proposed to be 12 dwelling units per acre, where under current zoning, the allowable density is four to eight dwelling units per acre. Also, the existing zoning, existing zoning in the PA3 residential area does not allow single-family attached uses, which would be allowed in this proposed PUD concept. The new open space area on the eastern edge would replace the under, or the existing underlying residential zoning. And there are also changes to the boundaries of the residential, commercial, and industrial areas, which I'll try to explain on the next slide. So hopefully, this slide makes sense here, but the top left map, that, that area is indicating where existing zoning is industrial. And the PUD Concept Schematic proposes to change that from industrial to commercial. The map sort of at the top center there, those two areas are, one of them is zoned commercial currently, and one of them is zoned residential. And so in the PUD Concept Schematic, the proposal would change those areas from commercial and residential to industrial. And so there's a bit of adding and subtracting between the residential, industrial, and commercial. And for that reason, that table on the far right there does sort of a net accounting for changes in these land uses. So as you can see, the overall change is a slight increase in the commercial, the area that would be entitled for commercial uses. Roughly six acre loss in the area of land designated for residential uses when you include the open space area on the east and a slight increase in the industrial land. I'll also mention that in order to gain some initial feedback from the public, the applicant did hold a virtual neighborhood meeting back in March. Some of the key comments that came out of that were related to connectivity, including some, some potential connections that the neighbors were not in favor of. There were some comments about concern about traffic generation, open space locations and programming, and possible conflicts between future land uses. In terms of staff analysis, staff do have some outstanding comments that could be addressed in this, in the next phase in a submittal for a formal PUD zone document. I'll run through those comments here. First, the location of the open space area. Staff feel that this open space area might be better, better used or better, function better on the west side of the residential area in order to provide a buffer between the residential and industrial area. Also, use-related buffering more generally. Other potential concerns would be where there is residential adjacent to industrial within the PUD Concept Schematic, and also the proximity of residential development to the Interstate I-76 towards the southeast. Parks planning, we know that parks are important to people and have come up in existing or recent residential subdivisions. So staff would like to see a more thorough, more detailed plan for parks and how they're going to be programmed. Residential density, as I mentioned, the PUD concept does, does propose a higher maximum density in the Planning Area 3, the residential planning area, where four to eight dwelling, dwelling units per acre is allowed currently. The plan proposes 12. And so staff would like some more detail about whether that is desired or necessary for the entirety of PA3 or whether that, that would be focused on particular places where a certain mix of housing types was proposed. And then finally, in terms of specific land uses, additional details would be needed to ensure the industrial proposed in this PUD Concept Schematic would be more consistent with our I1 designation, the light industrial, and not a more intensive I2. And staff also would seek to eliminate the personal storage as an allowed use in the PA1, the commercial area. The next steps, as I mentioned, would be a formal PUD zone document application. And concurrent with this could be a land use plan amendment. And I say could be because the current PUD zone, or current PUD Concept Schematic does propose changes that total more than eight acres to the underlying future land use plan. And our, the LDC offers or includes a threshold. So changes less than eight acres do not require a land use plan amendment. Changes greater than eight acres do. Another consideration is the city is in the progress of updating our comprehensive plan, and with that included the future land use plan, which is expected, or expected to have a draft of that this summer. So this is something that will remain a part of the conversation moving forward. But a PUD zone document and, if necessary, a land use plan amendment, that would go through DRT staff review, and then also would need to go through public hearings at the planning commission and city council. And finally, the next step after that would be PUD permits and subdivision plats, which are administrative review with required posting, which gives city council the, the possibility to call them up. And here, the next two slides, these questions are the same that were listed in the staff report within your packet. I'm, I'm open to procedural input, but I can read through these if, if the commission would, would like. Staff in particular, I guess, is looking for thoughts and comments from the commission about the general mix of non-residential and residential uses and whether the configurations of the planning areas are an undesirable change from the existing. Whether planning commission, or our second question would be if planning commission is content with the proposed residential density, as, as mentioned. Third question, are there any particular non-residential uses that planning commission would not want to see or would not feel would be appropriate in this development? For example, personal storage, fuel station, things like that. Fourth question, are there particular areas of concern in terms of conflict between land uses? The common one that comes up is industrial and residential, when they are adjacent to each other. Where buffering might be a priority? And what type of buffering planning commission might want to see? Fifth question, does the planning commission have a concern with the configuration of the commercial area at 112th and Havana? Or with the frontage area along, of industrial along 112th? Six, number six, are there any specific architectural design elements or design in terms of parking and landscaping that planning commission would like to see? Number seven, is there, is there a desire from the commission to do anything with the existing farmhouse or barn? Is that a priority to preserve, or would it be okay to remove? And finally, number eight, thoughts and comments from the planning commission about general connectivity and circulation? So the applicant is also here with a presentation, or we can sort of go through these questions. Before we move on to the applicant presentation, I'm open to.
I think it would be good to hear from the applicant, and then we can kind of go. He might address some of your questions.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. This could be a little higher, but that's okay. Can, can you hear me? It's, okay, we're good? Okay. Thank you, Harry, for the presentation, and thank you commissioners. My name is Samantha Paul Miller with Norris Design. That's 1101 Bannock Street, Nor, Bannock Street, Denver, Colorado 80601. And on behalf of the development team, I'm very excited to be here in front of you today to share our plans for Murray Farms community. As Harry mentioned, we are going through the PUD Concept Schematic process. So our next process would be the PUD zone. So what we want to do today, I know that he mentioned there's no formal voting or anything. We're really just looking for your feedback so that we could take that information with us and, and use that as we prepare this next document. All right, well, as with all things in life, success is better achieved with a team, and this project is no different. We have assembled a highly skilled team of professionals to help foster the Murray Farms property through the entitlements process. With us on the design team and some in the audience here, we have the shared ownership and development partners, Caris Cold and Cypress Equity Investments. Norris Design is helping with planning and entitlements. Cage is our civil engineer. Aztec Consultants is our surveyor. And Aldridge Transportation Engineering and Planning is our transportation consultant. And of course, we've been working closely with the city's development department. The property is generally located at the intersection of 112th and Havana Street. Surrounding land uses include the River Run neighborhood to the north, River Oaks neighborhood to the east, and existing industrial development to the west and to the south. For those that are not as familiar with the Murray Family Farms, it was established back in 1917 and has been in operation as a small dairy, a cattle ranch, and a farm specializing in sugar beets, wheat, and potatoes over the years. Only a portion of the farm property is undergoing the PUD entitlement process. The existing farm is approximately 152 and a half acres in total, with 53 of those acres being considered for use by right zoning. 92 and a half are being considered for this PUD process, and seven acres, give or take, will remain with the Murray family for the property that's the, the farm and the adjacent outbuildings that are accessed off of Havana. Okay. Now, I know we're all familiar with the city's efforts to rehaul the comp plan. However, until that is completed, we have been considering our design direction based off of the existing comp plan. The portions of the Murray Farm under consideration with this PUD Concept Schematic are within the residential medium, commercial, and industrial distribution classifications shown there within the black dash line. Surrounding classifications within the comp plan include public, residential high, general industrial, industrial distribution, open space, and then office flex and mixed-use corridor across I-76. One item I would like to point out, and it's reflective here of the comp plan, I believe, is that it's trying to facilitate a transition between the existing residential land uses and the non-residential land uses. And Murray, the Murray property is that transition zone, and it's trying to find how to blend those two together. Zoning very similar to the comp plan shown here within, again, the black dash line includes residential 2, commercial 3, industrial 1. And then surrounding zoning include, again, industrial 1, industrial 2, residential 3, public, and PUD. Again, similar to the comp plan, you could see that trying to facilitate a transition. Okay. And with any thoughtful development, it is important to incorporate public outreach efforts into the design process. And with that intent in mind, we've conducted a handful of outreach efforts with the local community. We did hold a virtual neighborhood meeting on March 9th earlier this year, where about 25 attendees were present. And the key concerns that were coming out of that neighborhood meeting included traffic along 112th, conflicts with the railroad that are to the northwest, impacts from industrial development, commercial uses, what would that look like? Potential increase in crime, private and public parks, and connectivity between the Murray Farms property and the adjacent subdivisions. In addition to that meeting, other engagement directly with both River Oaks and River Run have taken place with both the HOA leaderships, as well as one-on-one conversations with residents. And we fully intend to keep that moving forward, going forward with our PUD zoning process to have additional neighborhood meetings and more outreach to residents. Okay. Shown here on the screen is a general concept that we are proposing for the Murray Farms PUD. I know this looks a little bit different than what was included in Harry's presentation. It's a little bit more illustrative, a little bit more graphic. We did this to really show, or at least detail a little bit better, what our intent is for the next step. So giving a little bit more texture of what we really think might happen here. Again, to be clear, we are only processing the areas within the red dash line as part of this PUD application. The areas within the southwest corner and the northeast corner are being processed or intended to be processed under use-by-right applications. As mentioned earlier as well, the existing farmhouse and outbuildings located off of Havana Street will remain under the Murray family's ownership. You can see that note as existing farm. So the area within the PUD boundary is approximately 92 and a half acres and keeps with the general intent of the comprehensive plan to transition between residential land uses to the east and to the north to non-residential land uses south and to the west. The proposed plan breaks the property into four main categories: residential, industrial flex, commercial, and open space. Access to the site is served from 112th, Havana Street, and 108th. Now, I want to point out, we are aware that there are existing concerns with traffic along 112th. And due in part, I think, to the railroad was mentioned, as well as truck traffic. And I can assure you, we have the same concerns for our future residents and users. And so we are working with our traffic consultant, the city's Public Works Department and Traffic Department to further analyze the situation and try to come up with solutions that might help the larger area, or at least try to reduce impacts where we can. Truck traffic is anticipated to be generated as part of this development, and is our intent to try to foster a left-hand turn movement down Havana Street, so moving to the south. And then that way, they can access 85 or I-76 by not impacting 112. So we're, we're working through that process, but that might help in that realm as well. More information to come as we kind of further that traffic impact analysis. More information to come as we kind of further that traffic impact analysis. So, moving from west to east across the property, starting in the northwest corner, we are proposing commercial land uses. This is consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan. I know that Harry gave a really great slide that showed what's existing and what's changing. Really, what's shown in the comp plan is a triangle, not ideal for development. So we're trying to square it off and make more usable functional parcels. Trying to keep with as close as possible the, the intent of the comp plan and the acres that are suggested with that. So, in the corner, we're proposing this commercial, which is really utilizing the accessibility and also the marketing window that's provided with Havana Street and 112th. The parcel could host office, retail, services, fuel state, fuel sales, convenience, grocery, or F and B, or food and beverage uses. We don't have a specific user in mind quite yet. Therefore, we don't have specifics on the design quite yet. However, we do know that there will likely be a detention pod in the northwest corner. And it is our intent to have buildings sited to front onto 112th if possible, with parking located more internally to the site. All right, moving east, flex industrial land is, land uses are proposed. This area is intended for office, employment, retail, warehouse, research and development, industrial, distribution, or production-style developments. Similar to the commercial, this would also be located, similar to the commercial, the detention would also be located on the site and the buildings would likely be sited to front 112th or the north-south collector that's proposed central to the community. Architecture within this zone will be on par with the neighboring commercial property, ensuring consistent aesthetics across the development and along the 112th frontage. Parking two would be located internal to the parcel where possible. And again, we don't have a specific user quite yet in mind for this. Okay. Further east still, residential land uses are proposed. We are anticipating a mix of housing types in this zone, creating a vibrant and diverse neighborhood. In the northern portion of the parcel, say, northern quarter to a third, we are anticipating a single-family for-sale enclave. And then the remaining southern two-thirds, three-quarters would be a single-family-for-rent community, which would likely be developed in two phases. Overall, the residential types could include a mix of single-family detached, single-family attached cottages, townhomes, and patio homes with an overall density of 12 dwelling units per acre. That density is consistent with our most dense product that was in that list, which is the townhomes. However, I think the overall density of the planning area would be less than 12, given that there's single-family detached and other product types included in that. And similar to the other planning areas, detention would also be located on-site. I did want to point out too, because Harry had mentioned thoughts on product type, and I would like, you know, if the goal of the comp plan is to facilitate a transition, I think including a diverse, a diverse group of product types would help transition that from the single-family neighborhoods to the east and to the north. Included with the residential neighborhoods will be a private amenity such, private amenities such as parks or clubhouses. These will be accessed by a proposed pedestrian corridor connecting the internal neighborhoods from north to south. In addition, a trail will be provided along the main north-south collector running adjacent to the residential neighborhood and then veering off to the west, so following kind of the northern edge of the existing farm and then north along Havana Street. This trail follows a daylighted ditch that is required to serve the community in the large region, but would be used as an amenity. Also located along the easternmost edge of the community is a planned open space corridor. This is estimated at approximately 100 feet in width, with 30 of that included as part of an adjacent ditch access easement. The space will feel even wider still with the existing open space that's part of the River Oaks neighborhood located directly to the east. And these trails and amenities would likely be, you know, there'd be benches, trails, vegetation, and all those things to create amenity for the residents. All right. In closing, we know that there are still a lot of unknowns with this community, but so much of that will be fleshed out through the PUD zoning process and a lot of that coming from input that we received tonight. It is our goal, as we move forward with the PUD zone process, to create an overarching character. We have some really good ideas in mind that tie back to the agricultural heritage of the site, establish community design and landscape character, as well as architectural character and standards. We want to further define parks and open space commitments. We want to define dimensional standards and refine the allowed land uses and also establish requirements for transitions between land uses to meet those comp plan goals. And as Harry mentioned, the next step is the PUD zone process. So we will be in front of you again with more information, more fleshed-out concepts, all those good things. So hopefully, we'll be in front of you very soon with that information. And that concludes our presentation. Myself and members of our development team are present here, and I believe online, so they might be raising, I don't know how it works, but raising their hands or asking to speak. And we thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your presentation.
Absolutely.
I think we can dive right in from questions from the commissioners. I think, first, I really didn't hear, answering the mail a little bit on what staff's concerns were. So I'd like for you to address a little bit of those as we talk to you, because I think some of their concerns.
Sure.
Some of my concerns. One, right, the buffer, maybe if we can bring up your, your colored map, the more artistic map.
We need like a screen split.
Yes, that would be good.
Sure, so.
So the first one, right, the buffer, right, between the industrial and the for-sale product.
Okay, yeah. So I know there was questions about, we are proposing a buffer on the east side between River Oaks and the residential, but also there's a concern about buffering between residential and industrial land uses in general. I think what we would do as part of our PUD zone process, obviously, we're definitely including this amenitized ditch corridor, it'll have a trail, and that space, I want to say is, oh, god damn, it's getting me, 70?
70 feet wide.
70 feet wide. So 70 feet wide as well as the road, and then the industrial land use to the, to the west. So that, we're, that in itself is acting as a buffer, but if we can, you know.
Yeah, I mean, love to hear from the commissioners, but it just seems like that industrial flex, right? Seems like we could, we have a lot of space right there along with the existing farm that we could, we can move that to the west or somehow re-transition or reorient that.
Yeah, I think even the, even if they're in that same location, if the buildings are on the west side, further away from the residential, it'll create even more, like if the parking's all on the east side.
Oh, so where the industrial flex is on the north part, so not having the building sited to front the street.
Yeah, because those buildings, you know, the closer those buildings are to the residential, you know, they're right in the, you know, they're right across, so.
I get that.
Even if they were on the other side.
Two, and this is just a conversation, right, that happens to be recorded for everyone to hear. So we want to have this back and forth, but I, I think there's two schools of thought on that, too. Yes, the building would be further away, but it does have a less appealing, like, pedestrian, pedestrian-friendly character with the building further away from the street. So if we're trying to go for a more neighborhood, mixed-use neighborhood character, it would make more sense to have it, I think, closer to the street. Again, totally open for conversation and we can certainly have inside internal. That's kind of where my head was going with that. And then also, I think the architectural character of the industrial flex is going to be a big factor, making sure that that also doesn't feel like, you know, of, an industrial building, you know?
So if I could chime in real quick, just even take it up a little higher level. You see that there's a commercial area and industrial flex, single-family. How do the commissioners feel about those uses in general, right? Are you all, I mean, let's, let's, before we talk about the urban design elements, let's talk, are you even okay with having any industrial or any single-family there? I guess I would like to hear from you all on that.
Yeah.
And, and Tricia and Caitlin, do you mind lowering that blind? It's like, literally like, the worst timing. Otherwise, I'm going to move over here and squish Sarah or something like that.
That was purposeful, Steve, yeah.
Maybe that one doesn't, but anyway, thank you.
Well, yeah, it'd be good to hear that, right? I think that's a very, very big point, right? I mean, I guess before we answer that, why such the push from commercial to industrial? Why not all commercial?
Well, there's existing industrial that's in that kind of northwest quarter area, if you will, but it's veering off into, so there's an existing ditch, a little history on the site. There is an existing ditch right there. Our proposed land use would realign the ditch to make that more usable. And then again, alleviate, removing the triangle layout of it, which is originally caused by the ditch. So making it a little bit more usable, a little bit more developable.
Ms. Jammer?
Thank you. So, as I look at the colorful map, so this one here, we have a triangle, so I see the challenge, right? If we move to the map that you just had there, that was up, right there, I'm glad that we can see the colorful design in here by red, purple, yellow. And I feel like I'm in a Twilight Zone episode where I'm re-engineering some of the challenges that are in the Irondale area. And what I mean by that is that if I am across the street to 112th, I think one of my art commissioners did flag that, hey, you have a single-family residential there, as I look to my right side of the drawing where it's zoned R3. So now I have to walk down the block, and I'm just giving a visual as I walk down the block, through an industrial area, and then get to the commercial. And I think where Commissioner Poppi Al said, well, why would we even remotely try to put an industrial site there? To me, it doesn't make sense to have that industrial edged up right on 112th. It just, it doesn't feel right from some of the residential that is there. I just, it doesn't feel right to me. Like, we talk about live, work, play before we look, talk about, you know, design elements or anything that we do not want to see there. I think if we get the zoning right on the front end, we can begin to talk about, is this I-1, is it I-2? And so in the I-2, there's some permitted outdoor storage, use by right. Don't think that's the right way to go. So, you know, defining flex industrial, what does that mean? What does that look like? But I really feel like the whole corridor along 112th should be commercial. That's just what I can see out of the hole. And then, you know, we do have this existing farm there, so now I got, you know, ag land, I got industrial flex, I got commercial, all in this little area that's a challenge, at least for me. So those were some of the things that immediately jumped out when it comes to the zoning of the individual parts. I'll just call it that. I don't know if they're plats at this point, just pieces, tracks, something, lines. Joke, anyway, okay.
Yes, it would be a lot.
It would be a lot, okay. Thank you for the clarification. Thanks for the humor. So those are just some of the things that jumped out at me as well, right out of the gate, so, yep.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you.
So if you could go to your last image where you had your aerial shot to the west?
Are you in control of this, or am I in control?
Someone is.
So it's just interesting that you selected this image and how people have brought up about connectivity. And you can see the train parked across both 104th and I'm guessing crossed 112th, which happens multiple times in the day. So I just bring that up as just the question about higher density in this area. And just having gone down 112th after dropping off kids at the school there and trying to leave from that area, just with the existing, the existing grid, it's taxed as it is. So I would just question with any, if you're looking at higher residential densities than what's planned, just taking that into consideration, because there's really only two points going to the west. And or you have to circle all the way back around to go to the north to get to 120th. So it's just, it's a very, very constrained grid in that area, much like most of the cities as Commissioner Almodora has brought up, where you're fighting the train everywhere you go, so going east-west. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I sat there at that intersection, literally, for 35 minutes, two weeks ago, trying to get my friend's daughter home before 11 o'clock. Got her home at midnight because of the traffic impact and the train just sitting there, so.
She get grounded?
We blame the train.
Oh, okay.
As long as she didn't get fired from her job, it's okay. I got fired from mine.
You know, I didn't even notice the train in that image, but that's a good, that is a good point. And I know that was brought up as a concern in the neighborhood meeting that we had. I think that was probably one of the most vocal concerns was the train. And we are working, and I know there's no, like, magical solution to get the train company's train to, to stop parking there, because they're going to train, they're the railroad, they're going to do what they're going to do. But we are working.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, we've already engaged with Union Pacific regarding the traffic consideration. To be honest with you, they don't seem very concerned. They responded by sending us pictures of their street signs that give warning that there's a train through there. And then we've also engaged a consultant called Rail Pros, who's going to help us with, hopefully with the permitting through the Union Pacific and through that path. And both paths, maybe we can try to do something. And then we have, I don't think we've done it yet, but I, in the past, for an on-grade rail crossing with Union Pacific, I had a contact out of the state and she helped out with that. Forgive me, I can't, I think she's in, it's not the, it's not C-DOT, but another department. Her name is Pam, I can't think of her last name right now. So hopefully by all three of those paths, we can get something to Union Pacific, or at least get it through to them that it's not just this development, but the city has a concern.
Agreed.
And I can tell you as well, from both Steve and I's day on city council, we've had multiple conversations year after year with the federal Railroad Administration about quiet crossings and stopping on the, the tracks as well. So it's a bigger issue than Pam and, and council.
Mr. Douglas, if you have comments?
Thank you for your presentation. And, you know, the first thing that brings, that I, it comes to mind is, so the portion of the common city, just, just an area here, Quebec, Quebec 56 in Quebec, right in the corner, there's, there's a, it's a next, it's a, I think it's a Volvo dealership or so. But anyway, it's mixed use. It has industrial and residential, and then it has more industrial. And I know in the, in the past, the problem was, what is this going to be when the homes, say, oh, can I say something? When transition as far as going all industrial or industrial move, make room for, for residential? Well, ended up that it's going to be industrial, mixed with residential. And the people who live there cannot make any modifications as far as adding on to their homes. They can make, they can make modifications to make their living dwelling better, but they can't expand on those properties. They cannot change what's already there, okay? And so, knowing that, I would not like to see the city get in another situation where there's already residential there and now a brand-new development. It wasn't like industrial was there first and then, you know, this is, what you guys, this is schematic and, and a concept here, is not to repeat the same thing that was done many years ago, but just part of this, this, this southern area. It just puts a constraint. And then you add, as far as the trains, now I know, it'd be nice if there was a great separation. I grew up out south in, in Littleton and when RTD came in on Santa Fe, they worked with, the state worked with RTD and, and, and I think it's Union Pacific, you actually do great separation. It's either the road went under or the train was raised to go over the road. And, you know, it's just, it's, it's a straight shot from that, that point, 112th, because as you get closer to 104th, you have spurs, you know, different types of industry need the off. the offload and unload. There are, I'm sorry, there is a, because of the stoppage of the trains, there is a air hose at 104th and Highway 85. So when the train stopped for a certain length of time, they're supposed, they're supposed to break the train, to separate it. So the traffic continues to flow. And then same thing on 112th. You know, as Commissioner said prior, you know, being on council, that, that was asked to put airline there as well. So they did it a few times, but since then, no, okay? But we also have emergency vehicles that, as that picture just shows, illustrates, it's a firehouse. So, you know, there's going to be an impact at a firehouse. So that means is that firehouse going to have, be able to expand later on? Because right now they're housed in a, in an area where growth and all, I'm sure that's what you see is what you're going to get. So there should be allowable room or setback to allow for future growth of that fire station. And then, you know, being high dense and all that, I know on the corner there says not part of this plan, not, I'm sorry, not a part. And then down here, both says not a part. I can tell you when Thompson Thrift up here off 104th, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, up off 104th and Chambers on the north east side, the commercial was developed. But they could not, they could not build until there was a yellow house there, until those folks in the yellow house either sold their home or whatever happened as far as passing away or so. That was the last piece of property to be sold and occupied before that commercial could be, you know, start and construct. And that happened, so now they're, you know, past that point. But to break things up as they are, and that's not part of your plan, but I would say that there needs to be incorporated what's going to go in these, those three spots. Because those are a big concern, because right now we're talking about the industrial flex, commercial, and then single-family homes for rent and for sale. I understand that's a new, new concept where they want to, you know, bring more rentals in and all that because, because of the housing market and all that. But you got to think about the residents who are in River Oaks. I would not want to be next to a rental. You know, you're letting a company take care of the property versus a homeowner, they would take better care of the property. And then, then you have light products boarding up to each other, knowing that, you know, maybe you could change that, where those are for sale, so you know those people on the other side of the fence have, have homeownership as well. I'm not, I'm not against rentals, it's just the placement. And I understand the corner there, high density, that might be apartment buildings. And that, that's another thing too. I mean, that's not a good, it's a good spot to be, put apartment buildings being 112th and being constrained with the train, a lot of things. But there's also an opportunity to bring in commercial because the folks in River Run, River Oaks, Dunes, they all have to either go up 112th to Peoria, over to 104th, go east to the King's Hoopers, which does really good business, but people are landlocked. They can't, either to Brighton or go to 7-Eleven, some convenience store, but they're lacking ancillary. And so that would be great if you could expand the commercial and really go after those needs. Because we have a lot of convenience stores, but we have a very few grocery stores, even this 30,000 square foot grocery store. And the median income would support that. But, you know, that's, that's my thinking there. And then as far as existing farm, I know his question was either keep it or, or see it go unless it's going to be a preservation, you know, the farm as far as architect or so, otherwise the farm needs to go too.
The existing farm that's shown there on, on this graphic?
Yeah.
I mean, the, the family that's selling, thus the property wants to retain that, so...
And just for clarification, when, when Mr. Brennan brought up the question, there's actually an existing farmhouse off of 108?
Yes.
And that's the one that, that is on this property? That's the one that we're trying to get feedback from, y'all, right there in the corner? A homestead from around 1920. So we just want to know what planning commission thinks about that.
All right. Does that have historical value, this farm?
I don't think it has, does much for me.
It's not been designated historical, but we just wanted to, again, we didn't want to, we wanted to pose it to y'all.
Yeah. I mean, I think the big feedback, again, trying to look to the next steps, right? As you asked, right? The big ones that come to me, I think Andrew hit it right, going I-2 to me is, would be a deal breaker.
I don't, I don't think we're leaning towards I-2.
Okay.
Certainly leaning towards more I-1 light, I-1 that feels more commercial.
Okay.
But allows for those industrial uses. And we would, in the PUD zone process, we can come up with standards, setbacks, architectural criteria, all these things that still allow for an industrial land use, but looks and feels and operates more like a commercial land use.
I think the, okay, well, that's, that's great to hear because I think as you develop the process, I think taking that into consideration would be great. I think the more commercial, the less I-1, I think would be better, in my opinion, on that, for the next step, that, for what you're getting.
Technically, we have more commercial than is already planned at the comp plan.
I know the triangle is definitely in odd shape. I, I do agree, we hear consistently from our community of this blended fashion of, you know, River Oaks, who's probably a low-density community up against a high-density, right, for-rent product, is not innovative from a PUD standpoint. So I feel like there's probably some magic, right, that could happen and still get the counts that you all want, but to have that, where you're building more of the for-sale product next to your new for-rent product and having that higher-density product next to the existing one on the River Oaks side. Having taken your magical, you know, eraser, remove things around, right, in Blue Beam, but it seems like you could probably get there and get a little bit of basket. We've consistently heard feedback of those type of products next to each other and hasn't been favorable. So I think if we can address some of those concerns, I think that would help you in that next step.
Harry, could you move to the slide that has the residential, I think 10? It just shows some of the products. So under, on the right-hand side there, single-family for rent, it, it's not envisioned to be like a traditional multifamily for rent. It, it is going to look and feel a lot like a single-family neighborhood. It's just under one lot is the correct term. But, and they're mostly going to be, I believe, single, single-story with some townhomes mixed in. So I definitely understand the concern, and we have, have heard that as well, just renters in general kind of pegged as people that don't like to take care of things, but it would be maintained by a landscape company. So, I mean, wouldn't that be more consistently maintained than leaving it up to, you know, John Smith to take care and mow his yard and make sure it's getting aerated and trees are pruned?
You might be right, but I'm just saying perception is that it, that's probably not right, right?
The city does have examples of that product, right? The Avila product on 120th, and then there was the one at Seltzer's Crossing. So we have seen that type of development before. We classify it, I believe, as multifamily.
Yeah, we've seen it pretty consistently in the latest, you know, things.
But yeah, just so, but we, we'd like to hear the feedback on what y'all think.
Yeah, I think even if you can keep it, you know, if you keep it the same, kind of like you're showing with the single-family for rent in the middle there, you know, if those are designated to be all on the eastern portion to butt against River Oaks to make that transition better. Because if there's townhomes over there, they'd be pretty boxed in and stuffy versus having them on the west side, which would make sense with the road being on there, on over there. And I think they do, I think the townhomes would make a pretty good buffer transition to the existing industrial.
Yeah.
But having the single-family for rent on the east, I think would, would blend with River Oaks at least, even if it wasn't rented.
Yeah. And that larger image there was actually an image provided by CEI to me. The other two are the Avila product, but that's not who we're currently working with. So I think it, the tendency is to go more towards that. I'm not sure if that's, and I know Bobrec is listening in, so I'm not sure if he wants to comment or if there's a way for him to do that. But I think the architecture would look more like that versus the Avila product.
I think that's a recommendation, just consider that in your opinion, if you can't rotate that 90 to provide that little bit bigger for the for-sale product.
I think, I would echo what you're saying, right? So let's fast forward just a little bit. So I'm a renter and I keep getting challenged by the railroad every time I got to go to work. And so if I'm renting there, when my lease is up, I'm out of here. That's all there is to it. So it's not even about ownership, but we can talk about homeownership versus for-rent. I think you would, you would, I would caution you to make it for-rent instead of ownership. I'm just saying, that's, I don't have a magic ball.
You're pro-renter?
No, I am pro-homeownership.
Homeownership.
Yeah, homeownership for sure.
Single family.
Single family, and, and, you know, I don't really have a problem with the multifamily piece. If it looks like the images that are there, they're a little bit, they look more single-family. But I just caution that you don't want to rent that, but that's me. And then I think to John's point, again, on that industrial use edged up against 112th is just not a good idea. And then as I think forward, like when I'm gone out of this and the, the farmhouse is gone and that family decides, you know what, I'm abutted between industrial, commercial, and this just doesn't make sense, or whatever that is, and the children decide, hey, I want to go ahead and sell, and then we're in a position to rezone? And what does that rezone look like? So I know that's not part of this conversation, but we have to think like that for later. And takes me, again, back to the Twilight Zone episode, that I'm stuck in reengineering some of the really bad land uses that happened over on 56th or in Irondale. And it's, it's not a dig at anybody, it's just, we want to be thoughtful about how we go about rezoning this and what happens on that edge of 112th. I would also echo what Commissioner Douglas says, right? There is 104th, there's an intersection that's busy. There is 112th, and how do you get to the amenities that you need from the current subdivisions that are there? And that's where we hear that all the time, well, I'm landlocked in and I got to drive way over down that way. So I think commercial uses makes more sense as well, but that's feedback from me. So, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Breck, if you would like to speak, you have been, you have the ability to speak now.
Great. Thank you very much. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Well, appreciate everybody taking the time tonight. Bo Breck with Cypress Equity. I just would like to jump in and address some of the comments here in regards to studying the single-family for-sale aspect and trying to turn that 90 degrees to provide about developing a Commerce City and, you know, further developing our concept around this community in Commerce City, as we believe it's very consistent with the spirit and character of the area and, and your guys' city. And we're really working to maximize open space within the plan. And by designing it this way, you'll actually notice where it looks like vehicle access would turn into the single-family for sale. We're limiting the amount of pavement in the project and, and providing some great access and some circulation. So that is part of the reasoning why we've landed so far with the single-family for-sale portion on the northern end of Track E, but we will continue to study it. And then I would also just like to address Councilman Almodora's comments regarding renters versus owners. Just to be clear, we completely agree with the challenge, or, you know, we completely agree that the railroad is a real challenge, and that's a challenge we could face in our marketing of this property. And therefore, we very view our interests as aligned with those of current residents who are already in this area and suffering from those problems. We know ultimately our community, whether it's for-sale or for-rent, will not be successful unless we can make sure this is circulation and vehicle connectivity that still works for everyone. So it is at the top of our mind on our plan, and it is also a concern of ours because we want to make sure we rent to people who will continue to rent and we sell to people who will own their home for a very long time.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Steve, did we hit all the points?
Well, I asked Mr. Brennan to pull up the eight question, the eight questions again, just so we can make sure that, I know we talked about the overall kind of areas, I wanted to talk a little bit about the specific uses. I think that was one of the questions. We know that staff's not supportive of having mini-storage in the development, whether it's the old school or the new school. But we want to hear from planning commissioners, is there any other type of development? We know gas stations have been a hot topic not too far from here, and so maybe you all would prefer not to see a gas station here. We also know that our I-1 is very broad, and so if they do allow some I-1 potentially, while that could be office flex and there's ways to kind of target that, it could also be an Amazon distribution center of 800,000 square feet. So how do you all feel about a logistics building versus a more office flex? So I guess I would like to hear from you all on that as well, if that makes sense. What's, what's across 112th and Havana, right? That's zoned I-1. And so do you all want to see that replicated on potentially an industrial? Or do you want to see more of the smaller type of niche development that was shown on some of the photographs for the industrial piece? But I do want to hear about the commercial, any commercial uses that you all feel like would not be appropriate.
Well, the fuel station just got approved, right, for 112th and 85th?
It did get approved last night, correct.
I'll need another fuel station now again, right, just on this corner.
Creating a PUD is customized zone, so we have the ability to allow or not allow, right?
I think with the, you know, all the concerns around traffic and railroad and everything like that, having any type of logistics building there would be a nightmare with truck traffic, right? So, you know, more, you know, if it is more of a, if commercial doesn't allow you to have a, you know, a bigger commercial use, we'll say, like a, you know, some of those like larger kind of doctor's offices or something like that, I think would work out. But yeah, I think mini-storage and like fuel usage would be pretty rough there with what's been in the area and what's gone through previously. But for sure, I think a logistics-type warehouse building or something like that, or even a, you know, say it's a manufacturing building, that even if it's architecture-wise, smartly, so it looks good, there's just the logistics of the trucks would be rough.
That's a good point.
Appreciate that.
Any other, any other thoughts on any uses? If not, we can move on.
I think we hit them.
In terms of the buffering, let's talk about the buffering just for a moment. We talked about it briefly on, on some of the residential land uses. On the proposal, there are the areas to the south and west that are currently zoned I-1 and I-2 that are not being touched, that are not part of this application. Do you all feel like the, the open daylight channel plus the road about 100 feet, right, would be appropriate buffer there? And then likewise, on the south side, those properties are zoned I-1, they got rezoned by council just a couple of years ago. What type of buffering would be appropriate there? And are you okay with the green space buffer on the east side of River Oaks? That would be, I think, approximately 100 feet potentially. How do you all feel about buffer widths on the west, south, and east?
Say 100 feet, that's, that's a good width.
Well, again, I think it could be used with the improvements that we discussed earlier, right, of where we're putting the for-rent versus the for-sale on the River Oaks side. And then also where the light industrial, or what we're calling that, of how we can orient that, I think to provide some better safeguards and buffers versus just the stated. I think there's some improvement that can be done on that site plan to help it.
Harry, one more question. Can you pull up the residential side, or maybe the overall? Yeah, that one works. So just kind of looking at the residential planning area in River Oaks, I mean, the, there's an existing open space there as well, so even that, there's really not a ton of homes that are directly abut there, so I think that works in our favor as well from a buffering standpoint. So, and they have seen all of this as well, so we didn't get too many issues with that yet.
Next round.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the buffer, I think, I think the buffer on that side's good. And then I think, kind of like Chairman was saying, the, the important buffer is between the north residential and the light industrial. You know, you want to make sure, I know there is that drainage pond shown and, you know... You know, you wanna make sure, I know there is that drainage pond shown, and, you know, that, that distance is actually fairly great, but, you know, you're talking about large buildings and, you know, you just wanna make sure that it's, it's screened pretty well. I know in like the DTC, they've done a good job of, you know, you have those like dips of greenery and then the trees kind of block the houses from the buildings.
Yeah.
So something of that kind of sort, I think, if that's what that ends up looking like, could work pretty good.
Yeah, and, and you know, just the way the site works too, and how we're proposing each planning area has its own detention, and it always is gonna kind of be in that north, west. Yeah. So, and I think with the R3, Dan also have detention on that western edge?
Yes.
So, again.
Most likely that pond that's shown there, just to the west of the single-family detached for sale, will treat a portion of that R3 to the north. We might need to have another water quality structure of some sort, a little swell.
I'm just thinking from a buffering standpoint, not having, you know, homes right up against the street and ways we can, you know, amenitize or landscape those areas, so it's not, you know, someone's backyard looking straight into loading docks, you know, worst-case scenario in my mind. I used to, behind a Safeway, it was not ideal. They like to power wash at like 2:00 AM. But, you know, trying to minimize those issues. And maybe so to, to the point made earlier, having the buildings more located internal to the park planning area would be something we can consider too.
Steve, who was the next?
That's good. The next question was design. We talked briefly here, I believe the applicant said that they wanna incorporate design elements, design. One issue I know that's come up in the past is making sure that our drainage areas are more attractive than they traditionally have been, right? With just not riprap and things like that. I know that's some, Councilman Douglas has brought that up several times. So do you all like to see, I guess, coordinated design through those type of, of drainage features as well, right?
Well, of course they're gonna say that, Steve. What's the other option?
Riprap and native weeds.
And well, and it was part of the PUD zone.
Drainage structures, yeah.
There's design guidelines that are required as part of that application, so, you know, standards for landscaping, standards for architecture will all be, you know, things that are addressed.
It can, it can be a nice amenity, right? That having that, having that daylighted channel, and so let's.
Oh, that's the intent. We, we want it to be nice.
Right, and so let's, let's really take it to the next level, I guess.
Yeah. To clarify the channel, we're probably looking at something like a 70 or 80-foot width that would follow parallel with the road, but that would just be for the major storm. At the bottom of the channel's probably a five-foot wide little meandering stream.
Right.
And that's where you're gonna have, when you have the afternoon rains, that's what's gonna carry the water out. So.
And trails.
Yeah, trails and plantings with native grass, and there will be some, some rocks and riprap in there where there's vertical drops, because Maui Flood District makes us. But, but aside from that, it's not just, it's not just a trapezoidal channel, we're trying to, to make that nice meandering design that pretty much all the jurisdictions are looking for.
Yep.
I think we head on the barn.
Talked of the farmhouse, and then I guess any, any comments about general connectivity or circulation? We did talk about 112th, we did talk about some of the internal connectivity through, from the commercial to the residential. Anything else that the commissioners, or that was not talked about or addressed that you all would like to make sure that the applicant and staff are aware of as we go to the next step?
Wasn't this where the corn maze was? Maybe we should save the sign.
Yeah, they do.
Maybe we should have saved the sign for the maze.
They have done a corn maze in the past here.
Dalia?
Do you guys have any?
Nope. Yeah, I think we hit everything.
That's perfect for you, Steve, yes.
Okay. Well, I think this was really, really helpful. A lot of good feedback and a lot of little nuggets that we'll take with us to, you know, internally to talk through and see if there's solutions. Yes.
Let's have one more.
Go for it.
You know, when things are considered as far as types and all that, and, and what about something to deal with the curfew of noise because of the homes? That's, I know, as far as the neighborhood, that has to be considered too, because I know when there, there's been construction around existing neighborhoods, there's been like a noise curfew, so they could, couldn't bring products in, or start by 7:00 and then, 7:00 AM, and then couldn't have something pass, you know, maybe 11:00 PM or so.
Like no power washing at 2:00 AM? Is that something that we, that zoning is enforceable?
Assuming there's an existing ordinance already in place for that.
You can do hours of operation in a zoning for the businesses. Curfews on the residential might be hard.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think you were suggesting.
No, 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 not, you're not.
For the businesses.
No, no, no.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I wrote it down, we'll look into that as well.
Just a suggestion.
Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thanks, commissioners.
I think we are moving over to our commission business. Any other further commission business we need to discuss?
I think we did, we've realized now that we need to bring treats and sunscreen to our... I'm kidding. No board business, thank you.
No treats till after 8:30, Mr. Amador.
Oh, midnight, we talked about.
Oh, okay, midnight. Any legal business?
Not specifically, but I believe Steve was gonna bring up the next meeting.
Yeah, we, the next meeting's scheduled for July 5th and July 4th's a holiday, and so we were looking at, to seeing if commissioners are okay with canceling the Tuesday, July 5th meeting. We would probably do a special meeting later in the month of, of, of July, but just due to holiday and that long holiday weekend, it may work better with availability and schedules. That's what we were thinking, but we would love it if y'all would vote, if you're in agreement with that and vote on that officially.
Yeah, you can vote officially, but just to clarify, it's not 100% clear a special meeting is necessary, or?
Yeah, we don't, we haven't planned out yet the July meeting, so there may not be one, but just thinking ahead, yeah, we're happy to get through this one, so.
Who would be in support of that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Do you all wanna talk about if there were a need for a special meeting, what dates might be, might work for you all in July?
We may look at it. We'd probably try to do a Tuesday, maybe two weeks later. I know that Tuesday's, right, is our normal night, and so that probably is the easiest for you all, but, and maybe it would be, again, nothing's set yet, but maybe July the 19th instead of July 5th, so.
I think if, when Caitlin does, when she sends out that email, gives her a couple of options, that's usually the best.
Okay. Okay.
Get back to her pretty quickly.
That sounds good, thank you all.
Any other staff business?
Uh, no, we just, we'll just have our quick little study session here at the end.
Are we staying put for our study session?
We're gonna adjourn the regular meeting, and then we'll just start the study session, because we don't need to take minutes and things at the study session.
Yeah, maybe we'll have it.
So we will now adjourn our commission meeting.
Oh, my gosh, that's funny.
And we will move to our study session.
Mr. Tolbert's not here, so I guess I'll do it.
Look, I brought you all some snacks.
I brought snacks for you. This, this should not take super, super long, but we felt bad keeping y'all till 11:00 or 12:00 or whatever last time. And so we were like, we will, anytime we do a study session, if we're not serving you a dinner, we'll at least offer you snacks. How's that sound?
We're salaried, Steve. Yeah, we're really salaried. I'll just take a water.
Any food already to chew? Oh, that's so nice.
Oh, look at that, alright. We are very informal at our, as we should be, for our study session, right? I'm gonna undo my tie.
Yeah, 'cause it's not a study session, it's taken off.
And it was too, oh, not then, now they shut?
Well, that one does, it would get a little more, but it doesn't really help a ton.
That works, anything we can do helps a little bit. And our previous city attorney, Robert Seasley, he kind of drafted it initially, but basically it has to do with annexation agreements, and you all in planning commission don't review annexations, they go right to council. But nevertheless, it's in our zoning code and you all have oversight of our zoning code. And so the, the overall changes and approach is to modernize our process and to bring it up with current city processes, also current state law. And so it's not a policy direction change, it's more a modernization to bring it up to current processes. So we'll just talk about that real quick. But in general, if a property is not incorporated into Commerce City, you have to annex, that's a state law. And there's some state law requirements about if a property can be annexed and, and what the city can take and things like that. We have to meet at least one-sixth of the boundaries, has to be within the city, et cetera. But as part of that, the applicant also has to sign what's called an annexation agreement, a pre-annexation agreement, that basically says, if I annex, I as an applicant are gonna do these things for the city, and the city's gonna do these things for me as a, as a property owner. We're gonna provide police protection, right? We'll let them hook up to South Adams Sanitary Sewer and water, things like that. We will give them access to our parks and our recreation facilities, they'll get garbage if it's residential, things like that. But we also want things sometimes, so maybe we want them to do additional roadways or traffic signals, or do some type of drainage improvements. And so this annexation agreement, it's an important agreement that dictates those terms and scheduling of, of obligations on both parties, really. But, but anyway, that's what this section deals with. So as I mentioned, we do wanna update it because we do wanna modernize some terminology and some authority that these agreements have. Again, as I said, that there's no change to the overall approach, there's no big policy things that say, we're only gonna do them on such and such developments or things like that. That's just not, that's not changing. So here's a little summary of the changes, it's found in Section 3320, which lays out all of our processes. They used to be called pre-annexation agreements, we're getting rid of the pre, and so you'll see that striked out throughout. You have to coordinate these through the development review team, the DRT. This is the, DRT is the body that reviews collectively all of our land use applications, and then city council as well. We also then are putting a time limit, or not a time limit, a schedule of when that has to be executed. What was happening in the past is sometimes they were being, you know, a day before the hearing potentially with council, I'm still working on this annexation agreement. Well, this is saying we want it done 10 days, which is when the packets due for city council. That way we're avoiding some of that rush. And then the city manager has that ultimate authority based on council approving the annexation to execute the actual annexation agreement. So, and then we updated, or the legal team updated some of the approval criteria to match state law and state terminology. That's what you see down there. So this is the red line version, this was included in your packet, and anything that's a strike-through were things that were currently in our code that we're taking out, anything that's in red that without a strike-through would be new items that would be added. And so they cover those topics that I just referenced, and it's, you see them here, and then, and then there's a clean version, also in your packet, but that's what this is. So that's all I have. Oh, and there's the approval criteria that matches up with the state language and things like that, and then a, and a clean version of that, and then any discussion or questions on, on any of these. So that's, that's all I have. I know it's not that glamorous, it's not signs and landscaping and oil and gas and all those fun things, right? But it's, it's more, it's really legal. And I don't know, Sarah, do you have anything you wanna add? Okay, no, she's, all right. I gotta sit down.
No, I think this is good. This is good, Tim, bringing this forward just to catch up with some of the processes that need to be tightened up a little bit. I think you kind of hit the nail on the head in terms of some reasonable timelines, in terms of review time and whatnot for council and whatnot, that, if I recall, that was a challenge sometimes. Oh, wait, this, this, and then it was like, okay, it's before you five minutes, and sometimes five minutes, I'm kind of being facetious, but it felt like five minutes. We're just having some lead time to be able to review and say, well, then if it's not this, here we go. So there's just adequate time for review of everyone aligning with the, the state constitution. I didn't realize it was a state constitution piece, I thought it was agreement between South Adams and the city, but if it's state, it's state. So, I mean, this is really good conversation in what's being updated in the inter, intergovernmental agreements to which the city is party to. Obviously, this is gonna keep us out of trouble, especially when we see things come down the road and it's like, oh, well, you just changed this immediately right in front of us. It's like, no, actually, it was reviewed with the thorough time, so I'm happy about this, no exceptions taken.
It should give our, both staff and legal and our city council some additional parameters, right, to work with that, so it's not quite as loosey-goosey. That's, that's kind of the overall goal. Any other, any other, any other comments or objections? If this, the next steps would be, you know, we may do a, we may do a, we may do a quick update with city council at a study session, just to familiarize with them. Otherwise, then you can expect to see this back as an approvable ordinance, probably not next month, maybe August or September, something like that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just trying to do some cleanup work, and I know that it was, it's kind of on our, our to-do list, and now is a good time, so thank you all for, I appreciate that.
Aye, Steve, I think the sooner the better.
I'm sorry?
I think the sooner the better.
Okay, good. You know, we're getting gross not stopping, and so we had another nearly 180 active applications, and now we're seeing more development on the east side of E470 now, so interest rates grow up, go up, and we're still seeing development occur, so I, pandemic comes, we still see more development, I, we just keep seeing more development, so anyway, but yes, I agree. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anything else? Our study session is adjourned.
Thanks for the snacks, guys.
Yeah.